My call is meeting of the Employee Council Work Session, Thursday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty, at ten oh four AM. Roll call. Naina Williams is present. Allison Williams?
Present.
Joe is excused. Raoul is excused. Kevin Pacheco?
Here.
Jay Ritchie?
Here.
Tim Cox is excused. Josh White?
Present.
Lorena Valdez excused. Javon Ward excused. I'm not sure about Rochelle Davis and Joelle Landers.
Present.
The following items will be discussed at this meeting. Item number one, discussion and follow-up on pay equity and step plan. A, grade adjustments slash moves. B, proposed hourly wage for grades. C, proposed percentage between steps. D, proposed time between steps. E, steps based on anniversary or fiscal year. F, steps based on evaluation merit or time. G, after step ten reached. H, current employees intercept at current rates.
Yeah, right.
Or move up to closest step. And Joe Ward did come in late, and Raoul Davison, you're our here. All right. Joelle? Once you get situated back, would you go over what we're looking at now, please?
Okay, after the last meeting, there were a few moves that I had been contacted by employees or departments. There was a move for deputy city clerk. There was a move for library services coordinator, and there was a move for... I can never think of the name of it. Early literacy outreach specialist. Those were the moves that I was contacted in regards to. In addition to that, the minimum wage became effective January first, twenty twenty. And in response to that, there were some moves within the fire department for firefighter paramedics and firefighter lieutenant EMT, fire lieutenant paramedic. And those were the only moves. And additionally, you will have a printout which shows, kind of, it's a spreadsheet showing what our current longevity pay is based upon, which is the percentage at five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five years. I have taken, for example, the minimum wage position at twelve dollars an hour. I've taken sixteen dollars an hour, and I've taken eighteen dollars an hour. And I have run the numbers for a three percent every three years, two percent every two years, and that is just to give a visual of what those increases look like. And that, those are the documents that you have there. And I guess now it'll be back to you, open for discussion, any further movement.
Thank you so much. So does anybody have any questions, concerns, or comments regarding the grade adjustments and the moves that were requested?
I would just like to start just by saying, thank you, Joelle, for this excellent work. And this is just so comprehensive and positively actionable for the employees. And just thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything they want to say about the moves and the adjustments?
So, let's see, our grades, they go up on the grade adjustments for doing, who have been one and just took them. My question is, if the grades went up, I don't know if this is appropriate to discuss it now, but the grades went up and everything, why didn't, for example, Fire Department EMT, they went up the grade, but they stayed at twelve starting, which is minimum wage?
The firefighter EMTs, I don't believe, those grades did not move. That was, that was where they were. So my apologies. What was moved was the firefighter paramedic, and that was, a grade was added for that, that sort of cluster, you could say. And again, though, it, I kept at what it is currently, that thirteen an hour. Firefighter lieutenant, that was separated from firefighter lieutenant paramedic, excuse me, the EMT and the paramedic were separated in grade and also in the hourly wage.
Yeah, I do, I mean, we definitely have to have some kind of difference between EMT and paramedic, just due to the responsibilities and stuff. I just also thought that the EMT grade was gonna change as well, and reason being, that's for the grants that were, that it supposedly recognized with just for structural fire body, when they provide EMS care, loud service, and a whole different stuff, other new days of structure.
Okay, so our concern was that the job description for firefighter EMT and firefighter medic, for what this was labeled as, is not the correct job description for our, for how we run things.
Okay.
I believe that this is based off of a volunteer fire department, and we are full-time. So, we don't, we don't just do structure, we do EMS, and like you just said, so it doesn't correspond.
I went off of the notes I had from the last council, employee council meeting, which was to separate the lieutenant EMTs from the paramedic and the captain EMTs from paramedic. So I thought I had followed what, what I had notes for. I didn't hear, I didn't have follow-up in, since November with either of you guys or the department to discuss it. So that's why, you know, my apologies if I missed something there, but I, like I said, I went off the notes that I had. And also, I do not believe that the grades that we were using were based upon a volunteer firefight, or volunteer fire department. I can double-check that, but I did not believe that was the case.
Well, regardless, the job description is specifically specified just structural firefighting, with no medical or anything like that on it as well.
Okay.
And the biggest thing is just trying to get these guys a little bit more than minimum wage for what they do, all their certifications they have, and what they're, what we're required of them to do with this. Regardless of the grade or anything like that, it's just trying to get, get everybody started in the right place and perform some things.
Okay.
I think that you have it separated, though, it's perfect.
Okay.
Everything is separated, the way it should be in our department. Our issue is, is the starting pay. We can't really do anything until we address that, because, once, because that affects the bottom, and that's gonna eventually ripple effect.
Yeah, but right now, we're not talking about the pay, we're just talking about the grades where we are, so that's...
But I don't understand the grades if they don't correspond to pay, so that's why...
Because the pay has nothing to do with it, I don't believe. It's the grade of what, where they fall in the, what's the word I'm looking for, Joelle?
The, the point rating?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, the point rating. And also, I did a lot of research with this minimum wage increase coming. And I did make a note with an asterisk on the firefighter EMT and the other fire department positions, that that wage is based on twenty-nine, twelve annual hours. What is not considered in there is also the budgeted overtime. And I understand that, you know, you don't always get that overtime, but I do want to make, you know, the statement that while those hourly wages do appear low at minimum wage and thirteen dollars an hour, a regular forty-hour a week employee is based on two-thousand eighty hours annual, fire is based on twenty-nine, twelve hours annual. And, again, to back up kind of what Naina was saying, if there's movements that need to be made within those grades, I will need, I will need help from you guys. As far as wage goes, I kind of have to, you know, that is where it is right now, given the, the increase that kind of happened with minimum wage and, and the, with other department, not departments, with other positions within the fire department.
Yeah, and it's just kind of like going back to what everybody else is doing around here, the lowest paid fire fire EMT for a full-time department around in the area is another dollar fifty more than what we're, we're offering. And that was before the, January, before minimum wage went to twelve, and, you know, the retention and everything, and for what these guys do, and that's something that I also apologize to, not getting back with you, working on this. And I know it's based on different hours, but as we can see, the last year, doesn't matter, for us, it's, you know, the fire's at, in the middle of the night, you know, we're, we're spending a lot of time, we're working the whole time, some luck of the draw, so.
As far as the grades, though, I think, I think we're separated exactly where we need to be, and that's kind of...
Okay.
And with the salary, I mean, we're not gonna discuss that now, but that is something that you're, when the budgets come around, Chico is gonna have to say, let's look at, go to Joelle and say, let's, what is, what is the average rate, what is what around here, and he's gonna have to request either a raise or, or a move, because this, I don't believe will be in effect this year. Will it? If we do the step plan, that won't be completed until probably towards the end of the year.
I, I don't have a timeline on it yet. I know that this last, this meeting today, this work session, was to try and kind of work out everything.
Right.
So that I can then present it to Carrie and have a financial evaluation on this.
Right, because we really can't do anything unless Carrie's there, okay? Because if there's no money there, it doesn't really matter what we're making.
Right, and that, I know that's the biggest thing, that's why we're asking for the grade, you know?
Yeah.
I just like, I just didn't know how the grade corresponded with the pay and so on and so forth, and I, I didn't know if it was gonna come for this budget, this new budget, because it would be nice for everybody to be on the same page, and that thing, so that way, you know, might get a little bit more, if everyone was on the same page.
And, and one last comment, if you look at police officer, their fiscal year nineteen gross, and you look at those numbers compared to firefighter EMT fiscal year nineteen gross, they're, they're very close. And I also did some work on that as well, to just acknowledge, while, yes, if you're looking at your hourly wage, if you're looking at twelve, yes, it, it looks really low. And I understand how that looks on paper, but I think you have to look beyond the hourly rate and look at your fiscal year gross, and that is comparable to the police officers.
The fiscal year gross isn't, that's not what we're, this is what we've earned over the whole year. This is different from me to him, depending on how much overtime I've worked compared to what he's worked. This isn't just showing what we are scheduled overtime, the four additional hours that we get every two weeks, or the twenty-eight that we get every now and then, too. This is everything. This is for, because we're, we're mandated to take three days of on-call every, every month, and that's a minimum of fifteen hours, just for that. So, that, that I see as being, I guess, in the, that's not really scheduled overtime if we're mandated to take that, because that's for additional revenue, just to cover transgress really. But I think if we're gonna do that and say that, maybe we should only put our fiscal year gross for what we're scheduled, for the extra additional effort that we put forth to make that.
Okay.
And then, I just kind of, just, just kind of bringing it in, in front of my eyes, too, we work twenty-four hours, the cops work, work four hours. I'd rather go and be making, if they're close, have, start off what they're making more, twelve hours, and then go home every night instead of stuck at the station, working all night long, fighting hours and that, if that's the case, you know, then just do twelve hours, just making the same amount of money.
Well, I want to say one thing, and it has nothing to do with you, well, I'm just saying, pardon, my husband was in the military. He chose to be in the military, he worked twenty-four seven, no days off unless it was allowed, he had to be on-call every day. So the job that you chose, you knew what the hours were, what the risks were, what the benefits were, before you chose to be a firefighter or paramedic or EMT, just as Jake decided when he wanted to be a police officer, he knew that those twelve-hour shifts were what he was going to have to work. So you can't look at it like what you do more, because as your job, you know that that's what is required of you, not what, it, when we did my husband's pay in the military, as much as he got paid, do you know how much money he made an hour if you, if you counted all the times for everything, it was two dollars and fifty cents an hour? That was it. So honestly, I, we understand that you do more and you're on-call, but you chose that.
No, I understand.
And so I'm not, and I want you to make sure, you know, I'm not...
No, I mean, it kind of sounded like it, but what, what I'm trying to get at is comparing to everybody else in the area, it's not, I'm not asking for sixteen, eighteen dollars or anything like that. It's to just try to do a little something, and not even matching what the other people in the area do, because that's, that's, they have more, they have a lot, a lot more.
Right.
It's just something, a little something, just to be able to retain guys and not have to put four or five thousand dollars in every time we hire a guy and go ahead and spend money.
And we, we all understand that, but I think there's gonna be a new program coming on where they have to, they have to sign something to stay with those, right?
Right, there's other reasons, we're trying to work that out and stuff, too, but if we can also just kind of work. And if that, if moving the grade for them means having them go up a little bit, I mean, I'd like to do that, but I know that we also have to do a lot of follow-up on all the time which we have, so.
Yeah.
I just don't think it's fair to compare us to other departments and say that it's okay. That's, that's not fair to us either, but just don't add up there. I know we pick what we want, and we're just trying to get what's right for us, but comparing us with other departments, it's not right, it's not fair to us to do that either, especially on terms that are, um, gross income for stuff that we earn, just my opinion.
I just have two comments. One is, Kevin, you had mentioned in a previous meeting of reexamining the overtime policy. And so I think that that is a whole other conversation that could, really, if you are able to move forward with that, that that will vastly affect what you're discussing now. And so I think that that is not necessarily what you're saying on this, I think it's not, this is all gonna be affected, right? So that would change if you, if you change that overtime policy, right? And then, you know, historically, when the comparative study went out, even in the county, all of our employees are underpaid because of that kind of nine-year moratorium. And so, and we're also, at the moment, not necessarily doing a push for wage increase specifically, because we are going to budget canvas in March, every department is going to look at that. So in the overall picture, I mean, I'm glad to hear you say that the grades are where they're supposed to be, because that is really important. And not to at all dismiss moving the firefighters up to pay equity, particularly for retention. However, in terms of what this plan is and how this is implemented in the bigger picture, if you are able to shift that overtime policy to the rest of the employees, that's gonna change all of this regardless, right?
Well, not necessarily, it'll just change our fiscal year growths, because our schedule overtime would change, not really dramatically, but it would, it would help the guys with their PTO. Reason why that policy was made was to help reduce overtime, and really, it's kind of encouraged to, to grow it, because people just do trades all the time, we don't really take our PTO. Because we do have to get that overtime just to make that number.
Exactly.
Because if we don't make that overtime to get that number, this drops drastically and...
But hopefully shifting that policy will be able to better eliminate the pay and equity.
Hopefully, that's just one avenue we're taking. This is just another. So there's been many, many avenues for the last five years with changing leadership every year. It's been a challenge, so trying to change direction every single year has been really difficult. Trying to get information for one HR rep, and then the next year having to get different information, it's just, it's challenging, not mean to vent frustrations, but I think that there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed, and, and I think our biggest one is, the grading system is great, and I love it, I love the step program, I think that we finally have a direction, but the elephant in the room needs to be addressed eventually, and I, I don't know when we're gonna do that, I thought that's what this was for.
Yeah, well, the wages we really can't address, because it would have to come from the department head itself, your chief, which chief, the main department heads, because they're gonna be going into budget talks, and I forgot to bring the timeline with me. And I think the budget hearings will be probably at the last week of April, but they're gonna have to look at the whole, the city as a whole, not just public safety or...
We get that.
Yeah, so I mean...
I just thought that the numbers, I'm like, Raoul, I thought the letters corresponded to a salary range, so whenever, that's all I thought, that's all we thought. So we were saying, so we're still at twelve, like, we're already starting behind the goal, like, why can't we say, let's start at thirteen, or whatever we want, the number we come up with, and then we can go from there, and then that'll be proposed instead of all these different propositions, like, that's what's gonna happen essentially.
So where would you like those numbers changed to? Because you, we, I don't know if it's appropriate to do it here at this work session? Okay. What are you proposing for the firefighter EMTs as a starting?
I think with, regionally and realistically, and obviously because of the budget constraints and stuff, I think if we were to at least minimum start our guys a dollar over minimum wage.
Okay.
That's still considerably under what all the other departments still start their guys off at. I think it would make us just a little bit more competitive, and we wouldn't be paying for the lowest bid, so to speak, either.
Okay, so firefighter EMT thirteen, then where do you want firefighter paramedic?
So with the, with the paramedic stipend, with, hopefully, our new MOU agreement will also continue that dollar increase.
So fourteen?
So that would be fourteen with the paramedic.
And fire lieutenant EMT?
Fire lieutenant, probably a dollar over that at least, like it is now.
Fifteen? And then fire lieutenant paramedic sixteen?
Would be a dollar over that.
And fire captain EMT?
I think we can be safe to say we just do a dollar in between officers, like, maybe between the lieutenant and captain, and then same with the medic, because of their medics stipend, or medic increase.
Captain EMT seventeen, captain paramedic eighteen.
Correct.
Okay.
What do you think? I think that puts us, like, in the ballpark to at least be competitive. Anything just in that really kind of, only ties our handles with the true being, so.
We know we can't ask for the, what they're hiring and what they're making in other departments, you know, and we're not, we're not, we're not gonna even try to do that. I mean, it would be nice, but we're, we don't get that revenue coming in, but we think how tremendous.
Are there any other grades that anyone feels needs an increase?
Well, I have a question in the bigger picture, we had discussed this, but maybe I don't know the answer. In terms of going to this twelve-dollar minimum wage, people who had been increased past minimum wage and now are at minimum wage, has that been addressed at all? Is there a way to rectify that, or are they just at minimum? They're just at twelve?
For, for this minimum wage increase, it was, the people were increased to twelve that, that were below twelve. There was not anything taken into consideration for this budget year to account for that. Moving forward, that is our opportunity. The, the exception that was made to that was the fire department, because what happened is it pushed the firefighter EMTs equal to the firefighter paramedics. So in order to not have a mass exodus of paramedics, we did a, an increase currently for those paramedics. It also trickled down to the lieutenant EMTs and the lieutenant paramedic. So there was a very, it's a very small increase, but there was, that was taken into account for the fire department, because again, with the certification for the paramedic, I, I just, that was major retention. I did not think we could afford to wait six months to make that. And the cost was minimal, and the cost was within their budget to take care of that.
So that's already been implemented as of January first, and they, that has been addressed within the department?
Yes.
Fantastic. Good to hear.
Teresa announced that in her...
Absolutely, for the people who got there.
Yeah.
That keeps advanced life support here in Bisbee, and keeps the medics here.
No, that's great, I'm glad to hear it. Thank you.
So does anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns about A or B?
I remember Tim last, last week, he talked about the police department, the police officers, and making recommendations, you know, they're more than K, but you didn't have to take a look at your job classification based on county-wide. And for us, it was the same thing, comparable with other agencies. The only other agency that seemed close to us in salary would be Tombstone.
Right.
And they start at seventeen, and then, of course, six months later, seventeen. But everybody else is at twenty or more like that, unless they just got a huge thing for their officers and stuff like that, so. These aren't big moving up to twenty, I mean, if we could, like, throw us a category for nineteen dollars, which I don't see any of them here, e- even something like that would be okay, you know? And I notice here we have the three percent, the two percent down at the bottom, which was additive, which wasn't there the last time. And the issue I got right there is just, even if we go with three percent or two percent pay increase, we still don't get the drift of the fact of how do you get to the max salary that we advertise? The police officer, it's fifty-two, seven, eight, one, that's the max salary you'll achieve in twenty-five years as a cop. But with the percentages, we don't address that, we're still coming up short, just like we're being with the longevity thing now, we're not, we're ten thousand onshore with current longevity pay increase. That's, so that, there's a small issue whether we do it with steps to get to that fifty-two or we do a longevity pay increase. That pay increase up to that twenty-five-year mark needs to address the fifty-two thousand, where at twenty-five years, you're gonna be at fifty-two thousand, it's gonna take some time to get there, you know? And that's, I know that's how it is with some of the other departments, you know, you talk about DOC or whatever it is, you get that longevity or that time of service, and there's that cap, like we're trying to do here, but if we could only get a longevity pay, it still needs to be adjusted to hit that max number that we're actually advertising to the community and these people that are outside trying to apply. Because we're running the same issue as the fire department, and you get a fire EMT guy or a cop that resigns, and they go to another agency, okay, granted, we don't, the city doesn't absorb the unfunded liability of the retirement, somebody else is that. But what, how does the city start with that? Because now, you take a look at the department right now, just eleven patrol guys, ten, because we haven't hired the other guy yet, there's ten actual patrol guys assigned to the city that are filling police officer slots. The senior-most guy on patrol is Jake and myself, and we hit two years on the road in February. As your senior two patrol guys, and you've got Carlos next, Steve, and of course, Joey the chief. So all that experience that you have, Brian, and all those guys who've since retired, that's not recouped. If we keep opening that door up to just, okay, we're just, guys gotta walk, because we don't wanna absorb that unfunded liability, we're just gonna keep running that same revolving door, and it's just gonna be new guy after new guy after new guy. You take a look at the gentleman who got out of Tucson, a lot of transfer for himself to the academy, realistically, is he good? Do, do we offer enough for him to stay in Bisbee, move down the service to state Bisbee as a police officer? Or is it just gonna be that, we're gonna eat the money for the academy, the uniform allowance, two years later, he's gone? And we still got that revolving door. You know, our job here, everybody's job to sit in this room is to do what? Help this community, support the community. We work for the community. People that work for the city, that's who we support. That's our job. Is to make those people happy, right? And we're not, I'm not in the business to make people happy. And we just take care of saving lives and take care of people that be crying, but it's in the end, it's a job. Is to support the people within the community. That's who we work for.
So Joel, is there a way to look at that to see if you can, um, either create a new grade? Or move them down to K and then, um, increase with what, I can't remember the dollar.
It just need twenty. It's like with communications, you know, we talk about, as a matter of fact, it was brought to me the other day, I'm not afraid of it right now. I had one of these fashers who came up and stated, hey, we lost a position. Or we lost a person that was filling a position. Took two other individuals, put them into a position. They're doing dual role. Basically covered one portion and then dispatch. So you've got three people rotating within the shift that are taking the swings to regular portion because, you know, the people aren't covering those. And they're the ones who have to work in front of the staff. And I, and I get it. But that right there creates that animosity within it because there's no, there's no count to be in communication. So how much does CCOM make? CCOM, well, them, them communication officers, they make like seventeen dollars an hour just to start. These guys here, what, thirteen, I think, they're maybe now? Or twelve ninety-six?
And they are, um, grade E, which puts them at sixteen.
If they can get to that, that'll work. Cause then they're competing with CCOM. None of them wanna go to CCOM, but they're competing, they're seeking another employment.
And other businesses and cities, they're all doing the same stuff. So we're, we're raising our stuff to compete with them and they're just gonna set the bar.
We talked about this last time. Minimum wage is going up to fifteen.
It has, I do not believe that's been approved. I know they're trying.
Long term, is it gonna keep going up? Cause you take a look at now, so we went to minimum wage twelve dollars an hour. What is that happening with grocery prices and everything else? Everything else did a slight increase as well. And then I noticed, I got something in the mail today about APS. APS is now gonna hike their prices up to a hundred eighty-three billion dollars a year income or something like that. So now all that's gonna go up as well. Convenient comes out right as the minimum wage goes up. So we have to deal with that, especially with the people who are surviving based on their old income. And their old lifestyle, which is the way groceries and everything was before too. Where we pay now, it's, it's cost of living goes up, but the pain didn't go up to meet that cost of living for those who are already living at that base. Twelve minutes to whatever case they pay. Now, we know, I mean, we all know that most of it's, that all of this is contingent on budget and council approval.
Okay, so I will.
So dispatch, the communication side, they're, they're, they're bringing where they need it. You know, it's the dog, that's what service is making, CCOM's making. That's, that's right, the money within the realm of this community.
And I don't know if the grade needs to be changed for the police officers or if you just want the salary changed there.
If, if they could get up, I get it, we're not gonna get to twenty, I understand that. But if we could get these closer to that, to more competitive with these other agencies, that'd be great. We have nineteen. Be a little bit better. If we can get to twenty, awesome, but for me.
So study the grade and just increase the.
The salary to two, just say nineteen dollars an hour. So then, and then we talked about it, Tim brought that up too, was if you're already at the max, which you can make now within the category. You can't expect a pay increase on top of that. You know, you're already at the max, what we advertise in the city. But most of us are not at that or will never receive that. So, so we get that. You can't go all the way up here to get to that point. We'll, we'll take a little bit lower. A little bit more competitive, especially when it takes a year to get a guy on the road.
Okay, thank you.
Um, you bring up an excellent point about the cost of living increase, which we, you know, addressed a year, a year and a half ago. Um, but to look at that in the long term, since the step plan is, you know, over ten, fifteen, twenty-five years. I mean, all these other numbers, is there a way to put in a cost of living calculation? That could be reflected in these numbers so that it could be, I mean, even if it's a small, you know, an acknowledgement. That cost of living increase, we know should occur, um, historically. And that if it's reflected in these numbers, then it makes this document more viable to be used long term as well. Instead of having static numbers based on a twenty-twenty number. Is that a possible calculation to include, even if it's a note somewhere?
I can look into that. Um, I guess my only, the first thought that came to my head was that, that's a variable. So how do I, how do I calculate for a variable?
That is tough to do. And. You're not gonna be, I don't believe she's gonna be able to, I mean, we can acknowledge it, but I don't believe she's ever gonna be able to.
I don't know if I can put that in as a, as a real number, cause I mean, I could go way too low and it wouldn't be accurate and I could go way too high.
It's like our retirements, like this year, I got a, that was two point five percent pay increase on my retirement. And that was based on Phoenix or Maryupcopa County cost of living. So they increased ours even out here to what their cost of living, because no, it's no longer where. Cause last year it changed to where you, the yearly increase automatically until you die, it's based on the cost of living. So if there's no cost of living increase in Phoenix, we don't have nothing increased in our retirement. That's, so yeah, that's, and that's based on, I think, where you have to look at it from the previous year. I think that's how they calculated it out, because with all their announcements and all that stuff to, to base that number.
Wonder, when we looked at it before, we were presented with, um, a one, one to five percent increase, right? And the number for each of those. And the council said, don't even look at the one percent, you know, we would start at two percent minimum. Then it actually was a five percent increase, right? Isn't that what happened?
I think that was the first time. This last time, I think it was just three.
Was it a three percent increase?
I think the first time was five, the first time.
One that happened two years ago?
No, the one that happened.
Most recent one was three percent.
Three, most recent one was three.
So that three percent increase, and that was actually, you know, addressing, uh, six to nine year gap that had occurred.
But that still didn't bring us up to the gap price.
That's what I mean.
That only got us a little out of the, out of the number.
That's what I mean. And so, but without including it at all, we're still behind on the gap. But we're not addressing the future. Anyways, that's my thought. I don't know if it's possible, but even a note that said. You know, if, then, or something, that's all.
All right, does anybody else have anything for AMB? All right, let's, do C propose percentage between steps. Roll, what were your, was your, um, thought process, Kevin, for AMB? Roll for the fire department. Do you wanna see, it's either two or three. Did you wanna see? Three percent in between each step or did you wanna see two percent in between each step?
Um, well, obviously we would love to see three percent.
Yeah, but I meant, but for us to present this to the council, we're gonna have to.
Exactly.
Even though we want three percent, and maybe that is the consensus that we get out of this meeting, is that we do want three percent.
But I don't think the difference between three percent or two percent really breaks the bank.
I know.
Um, but like I said, uh, we're gonna, we would like to do three percent, obviously. Just because, like you said, that even the past cost of living that they did, didn't even get us to where we should be. So I think asking for three percent wouldn't be a stretch to say, well, this could make up for lost times for the last decade or whatever. Um, cause the only reason why we've had the, the increases has been because it's been mandated by the state. And, uh, we did have that one cost of living increase that, and that's still, we're still trying to play catch up.
Right.
So if we can just catch up a little bit, um, that would be nice. If, if council only approves two percent, obviously we'll take what we can get. But we would at least like to see if, if they would approve three percent. If we can do it, why not do it?
Is everybody in agreement then? That way we should target the three percent and fall back being, uh, two?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm good with three. Go high and that's not gonna bring us down low, but you know, the main, the main thing is not supposed to come down, is that it's across the board. And for the guys, the brand new people, cause I know it's what happened last time, where three of us didn't end up not getting it. At least from the fire, the police department side.
Yeah.
It's gotta be across the board. Even that new guy coming in should be sitting at that same pay.
And I personally agree with you on that. I do not know why that, that decision was made at that time. Um, why it had to be a minimum of a year, because there were, there were a number of people that missed it.
With, with the proposal, let's say they, they approved a three percent proposal. Is that gonna change the starting salary for somebody who come in? So if we have somebody who was hired on, so maybe sixteen ninety-two an hour to start. There'll be women, women seventeen, 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 two, sitting at an hour. Or these guys that just got hired, they should be sitting at, they're coming in at, that's not, that's what also needs to happen is that if we're gonna increase it two percent. That starting salary needs to increase at two percent as well.
I think that is part of the proposition, is that we are proposing that within this grade. This is our new range, which starts at, you know, for, for E, that starts at sixteen an hour. Which is thirty-three, two eighty annual. And yes, that, that is where we will start. Um, it is, that was trying to take into account and simplify compared to, I don't know if I have it. Easily accessible. The sheet that has all of our salary ranges, there's like seventy of them on there. And so I think it was, you know, let's, let's kind of try to cluster people, you know, and positions that have similar. Sorry. Um, but yes, that, that was part of it as well, was that we were really wanting to, yes, change the current. So this would change on every job description, um, would be what I understand is the proposal.
All right, so D, the time between steps.
So can, I, so the time between steps. My base thinking is we're, we're worried about retention right now. We're worried about keeping our employees. Um, normally in our department, the people who do leave are the one to five year people. Um, after that, you're pretty, they're pretty much set in their ways here, um, so to speak. But what if we did something, so if we are worried about retention in that, in that phrase. What if we did something where the steps for like the first five years were quicker than the steps after that? So what if we did like every year for the first five years and then every two years after that or? Um, you know what I mean? Is that possible to do or are we just gonna do straight across the board every two years? Cause it's kinda hard to keep people if they have to wait two years to get a raise after they were hired. Um, especially with the, with how aggressive everybody is around us, uh, picking our guys away.
The only thing that'll help us out with that though is that if we have to renew the year thing, that they have to pay that, they have to FAB. But in those two years, they have to pay that for all the gear and making all the purchase of all that, something new that we're growing out.
Right. Well, that's just for, for their gear and their medics or what about just the basic people who stayed for, that just get hired that fluid?
That's agreed with them too, all new people.
All, all city employees, not just firefighters.
I'm sorry.
Everybody's having to sign a contract who gets hired on with us?
It's not a contract. It is a training and uniform reimbursement agreement. Which, um, itemizes and it varies per department. Police department, obviously, different costs than fire. Um, if there is an expense that the city puts out to bring on a new employee. Uh, whether it be training, manuals, uh, schooling, uniforms, then yes, those will be itemized. On this training reimbursement agreement and it is currently set at a two-year agreement. So if you terminate your employment prior to two years, if the employee resigns. Um, then they are responsible for reimbursing the city for that amount that was put out there. Now, other departments like finance or something that there are not immediate costs. There is not, that, that agreement wouldn't be applicable.
Well, I think, I need to help us out a little bit, but strong-arming people for a couple thousand dollars and rewarding them are two different things.
So what you're saying, instead of doing it like one, every first one year between each step to five, you're saying is to do it at two? Because of the way that's the.
I mean, we, we can add them out and for all the turnout gear and everything and all that schooling and stuff, I believe it's around like four thousand ish. Or, I don't know if that would help keep them to stay. I mean, granted, absolutely, it would be nice to get something every year.
Okay, no, no, I was trying to figure out.
But I was just, I was just letting him know, I didn't know, he knew that we're doing that as well. As far as trying to keep people, because we do have people coming in for a few months and then move. So I know that's one of the things that we're doing to try to help keep people here.
That's cool. I just, I know that for me, when I was on probation for a year, after getting off probation, it'd be nice to see some kind of increase. Um, if I don't get one until two years. This is, the way we've seen it for the last decade is, it's the people who are, who are brand new that, that get their training. And then they do, if they are gonna pay it off, if somebody wants to leave, they'll pay off that, cause they're not gonna give up an opportunity, cause they don't come all the time. Um, it's not like you can just apply somewhere and, and they hold on to your application and then give you a call. Like, you have to actually wait for a spot to open, you have to test, you know, you know the process, obviously, just saying it for the public. But, um, it's not as easy as just applying. So if we were to do something where we were to at least, at least the first five years, you get something every year.
Okay.
And then separate it, after that, it goes to longevity to every two years. And we could even do the two percent first five and then three percent after that. Or, or, you know, there's so many different ways we could do it.
Absolutely.
But I really think it would be who, all of our departments and not just ours, that if you reward the people who start new. Um, they're gonna get good taste in their mouth that, hey, this place does take care of their employees and they do care. And, and after five years, after you're here, then we can start saying, okay, now you need to start helping us a little bit now. So now instead of every year you get an increase, now you're gonna get it for two years.
So Joel, is there a way to, like, when we do the proposal, we want three? But is there a way to make it where, like you said, maybe if we start out at two and then move up?
So you're saying two percent every year for the first five years?
Correct, right?
And then every two years after that, after five years is three percent?
Correct, right?
Right.
Five percent, yes. Yes.
That, there's, it's just plugging numbers.
Okay, no, I just wanted to, I didn't wanna make more work for you if you didn't think it was.
Yeah, I didn't.
It was a way to plug it in.
And I'm just speaking ideas, guys. I'm not trying to, to break the law here. So if you guys have any, anything to go with that? That was just kind of my idea. It, it follows right in with retention and, and, and everything that we're trying to do.
No, I like that idea. I mean, I think that's peaceful. I think that's something we could look into. Um, and I do like that after that, you, and then you go to three percent. And then you have something else to, to know that if you stay that long.
You're still getting rewarded.
Right.
And so you, you're proposing then three percent every two years?
Correct, so on step six, it would be two years before you get step seven.
Okay.
Does anybody have any comments regarding that? And is everybody in agreement that we want, um? Joel to look at that when she does the proposal for us?
Agreement.
What do you think of that?
I, I, I love this process, cause that's exactly like what, what we're trying to get. I mean, that's a fabulous idea and it just, I was doing two percent every, or three percent. And you know, to, to think outside the box and bring to the table, a really good idea. So, yeah, I definitely like that and.
Cause we are gonna have budget constraints, so we do, we are gonna have to give a little bit on the side too. And I think that's.
But no, that's just plugging numbers in and percentages in.
If we tell them two percent, if we tell council the two percent for the first five steps, then they can budget for the next three pers- next. Four steps for three percent, cause that will be what we are looking at. And so that way they can go ahead and start budgeting.
It's like we've already compromised before we, we.
It's like we've already compromised before we, it's, it's economically viable and it's more.
Right, and it doesn't make us look greedy or like, we're not trying to stress anything, we're just trying to be fair.
Exactly, it looks really good. Like doable.
Right, what if we're not at the first five steps, we're at the, till end of the steps?
Yeah, so those people are getting two percent, not three percent, two or what, three percent?
Um, is that how that goes?
I'm sorry?
Say that again to Joel?
I'm just, I'm just, I don't know if I'm understanding.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't know.
If we're not in the first five steps, and we're on past five steps, we're getting a three percent every two years. Whereas the new people are getting essentially four percent for our three percent.
Oh, every two years, okay, yeah, I see that.
Yeah, you have to remember, but you have a problem.
You'd have to move that percentage.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, no, I get you now, yeah.
So then let me ask this thing, so if we were to implement this, um, so let's, let's take, let's take me for example, I've been here for eight years. Um, if we were to implement this as of this, say this budget here, would I immediately go into step eight? Or whatever, however many years it takes to get step eight? And then would we back implement some of those percentages, is that kinda how we would do that, like, cause that makes, that's a great point.
Yeah, I know, I didn't even think about that, yeah.
People here after the five years that have been here, uh, benefit from this? Cause then that'll put us right back into all the compression issues.
Mm-hmm, yeah, no, um, and again though, that's, that's the purpose of this.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So if, but if you're looking at two percent for the first five years.
No, five years is gonna be amazing, they're the same rate as everyone.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're gonna catch up to it, and I think that's the, every year for the first five years. Are all accounted.
And, and it really, it does, are we then, are we starting everyone at step? One and we're not, cause for you being, yeah, so I mean, at this point, this is getting into, um. I would, I would say higher level accounting, that is really a question I have to go to Carrie.
So let's ask Carrie how we can, could that be one of the questions you ask Carrie?
Mm-hmm.
Is how do we, for the ones that start at step eight and not at the beginning, how do we?
Yeah.
Catch up.
Yeah. I knew it was catch up, I just couldn't say it.
Sorry.
So yeah, so that, let's let Carrie do the numbers and let's see how we can fix that for the people that don't start right at step one.
Mm-hmm.
Or cur- currently rewarded or made for past longevity. Because there should be honoring the people who are, have already been here. Like, uh, we use Lorena as an example for being at step ten, or past step ten, that issue of if you already have fifteen.
See, and that's what I, what I, that's what I'm asking too, so it's like, for me, it says fire, we tend to be in T. So starting off would be fourteen dollars an hour, but I've been doing this, this is my third year now, so.
Right.
Um, so that would, I would assume, just from what I'm thinking this is, I would be in step three automatically.
Mm-hmm.
So would that, that would account for my increases every year, so step three would already have those increases built in, right? Essentially?
Mm-hmm, essentially, yes, depending on what we, yeah.
So then that would, so then that's, that would include my increase one to five year, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then also with promotions, then, do we do a one to five year step plan for that, for promotions? Or do we, since our longevity, are we doing two years?
Um, that's, we're gonna talk on that, yeah.
Three years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause then, then you're going to all that stuff.
But like Lorena, for instance, she's already in, she's already in ten.
Hmm, I think that was, um, that was a misunderstanding.
Oh, okay.
But, I mean.
Is she maxed out?
She's not, no.
No, to where, where we have, so her position, whatever her position is, what does it say, her back's pace, pay, pay, pay can be. So if she, if she's maxed out at ten years and she, that's it. If she's not making.
She's in.
Forty thousand dollars a year, that's what she should be.
She's in E, and that was the confusion, yeah.
It's just a matter of bringing her up to that max at the end, so no matter what happens, from, when you take a look at this. Based on current, current salaries, not a single person in this town will ever meet their max salary that we would advertise. So no matter what happens, if you go to a program, you're still gonna get a pay increase at the end, even if you're maxed out, you're still getting to get more money. Now, you may not see nothing happen.
Her wage.
Right. You're still gonna get paid.
Overtime and stuff like that, her gross is more because she probably gets overtime and things like that.
She would, so if Lorena, we're looking at Lorena as an example. Um, s- her rate at, she's at. Thirty-four five, which is.
She's in between five and six, is it five and six?
No, nine and ten. No, she's thirty-four.
Between nine and ten.
Nine and ten, okay.
Yeah, so then she is close, but yeah.
Right.
And as we discussed with her, there isn't the opportunity, uh, for a position change. There isn't a different title or duties currently. Um, some departments just don't have as many positions as say the fire department has.
So let's let Carrie look at that, what the numbers would be, it, let's say if you're already in step nine, how do we get, if she's not in that? Pay range, how do we get those people up to that pay range?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, but it sounds like if we were to do something like that, you'd have to just reset everybody to where the, where the base starting wages. For that year, for that corresponding grade, so if like, say I'm making nineteen something.
You guys.
And I got eighteen dollars an hour, um, is the starting pay for that grade? And I'm at nineteen dollars an hour, then obviously, all these percentages and all these steps are gonna be a little bit off. So if we were to start them over, and saying, well, if you did start at eighteen and you've been doing this for three years. Then let's start from the beginning, and then this is what you would be, and whatever's greater, we would accept. Cause if, obviously I could take less than what we're already making, but that's one way to do it too.
Okay.
So could you look into that for us?
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be the biggest thing is where do we implement the paperwork here?
Where do they start to implement them into that?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so I think we're, we already, we have, are, is, do you have the, are you okay with the time between the steps?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Um, so E, steps based on anniversary of your physical year, physical year is July first to June thirtieth. Just in case anybody didn't know what the, that was.
Say that again?
It's July first to June thirtieth is our physical year.
Fiscal.
Our fiscal year, what did I say?
Fiscal.
Oh, I can't talk today.
As opposed to your start date?
Uh, yeah, or as opposed to your start date.
Well, it's not difficult to, um, for departments to look at employees' start dates. And include the increase in the next upcoming budget.
Right.
So there isn't a difficulty with the finance director and the department head to actually do a, your anniversary. And, uh, do the computation for including that in the upcoming year, right?
And that is how it's been done, um, my only point was to just make sure that you are getting a say in everything that we're bringing forward, so.
I'm okay with anniversary, I'm, I'm okay with either way, but anniversary is what we, what we do now and it seems to work.
Yeah, I would prefer anniversary.
I'd prefer anniversary as well.
Okay.
Alright, F, steps based on evaluation merit or time?
Time.
Time, okay.
I, I, I agree with Tim, what he was saying about the whole merit thing.
Time, based on some of these biases, I didn't even know.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, merit, no.
I think merit needs to be acknowledged though, because that's the basis of what we, you know.
Yeah, but you know something, when it comes to merit, when it comes to merit or evaluations, that to me is based on. You as an employee who's working for me as your supervisor, and I acknowledge in fact you're doing a great job and stuff like that, you should be kinda in-house with the department. You shouldn't, I don't think getting a pay raise because, oh yeah, he's a four and Kevin's a three, that's because I like.
Right, no, I get what you're saying.
That's where you're.
I, I understand you said that to that, I don't necessarily entirely agree with you, but I do understand what you're saying.
I just.
I think we're all sub-government employees and we need to take that into consideration, this is government, not a corporation. And that time is equity in, in our government process.
Like you said, unbiased, I'm completely unbiased, I like, I agree with time.
So Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, so after step ten is reached, what happens? So I said that. Well, then you just could retire, just leave us, but for those of us who stick around. But if there's no way to promote in the, the, I'm the, I'm the only one of me, there's no, I mean, other than being a clerk, there's nothing else I can do.
It's the same exact thing that you said in the beginning of this meeting.
Right.
We have all decided to choose the career right.
That's right.
I'm a police officer, I decide to do twenty-five years as just a grunt, that's my choice. When I hit fifty-two, that's what I choose, whatever happens after that, as far as pay increases, oh yeah, okay, oh, someone will get two percent pay increase because of this. Okay, great, I'm happy with it, but I've made that choice, either not to want or not. If I decide to do this job, there is no ability for me advanced such as communications officer dispatch, I've made that choice. As I hit my max, I can't complain.
No.
So that's what I look at, it's, it's if you're at the top of the tier, you got two options, either stay, deal with it, or.
The way this is set up right now is fifteen years.
Yeah, I just, well fifteen years is good, but I'm talking, I, but wasn't necessarily, I'm just saying, if I'm not in my position. Let's just take me out of it, if I'm not in my position and somebody else is, and there's no room for them, what do we do if they choose to stay?
I, um, well I think this is, again, we're calculating in or acknowledging cost of increase. Um, cost of living increase is part of that equation. Is that if we are stuck in fifteen years in a twenty-twenty salary, we are going to be. Not be able to retain employees, so cost of living percentages, even if it is included as an approximate. Say, use that three percent number every five years or whatever, it's an approximation, but a realistic one.
Um, and that's what I had said, that maybe you do a cost of living instead of giving anything else. Cause it's not gonna be, we're never going to catch up to where it is now.
Right.
Unless we have a millionaire come and just, you know, plethora us with money, but.
And then the other thing I was gonna say is that, um, because of each department having a small amount of position. Or larger amount of positions, one, we have been looking at, and I think this is in here, but internal, um, transitions. So transitioning to an, a, a position that internally that becomes available. Or, as I had suggested, um, in a previous meeting, is that, um, there, there. Is the opportunity theoretically to create a new position with new, with additional duties. That includes a wage increase that could be, uh, posted internally, or, I mean, to acknowledge specifically. Um, it would be additional duties, but as a way of, aside from more a cost of living increase. Um, and then may perhaps even transition like the dormant, that current position, the way so many other positions. We have four dormant positions at the library, for instance, we don't have an archivist.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, cause my department used to be five people.
Right, and our department used to be seven, four full-time through part-time, and that's not the case now.
Mm-hmm, so.
So, COLA percentage every five years is what I gathered?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, I mean, it's just a proposal, it's not like this, it's not like we're, this is a done deal, this is our game.
Now, I, I look at things like, like, you know, that is that you chose to pick that.
And that's, and I don't mean that in a, in a bad connotation, I just meant, we chose to do what we do.
It's like chief of police, Alper's not going anywhere for twenty years, so guess what, I will never see chief of police. Who's in the police department, one's not gonna have a deputy chief, same thing, it's not, those, those are positions, when I hit sergeant. If it's when Steve leaves or retires, that's it, and there's only two of them. So guess what, that's eleven guys fighting for two spots, guess what, better put some work in. You know, that's the way I look at it, it's one of those, you choose that twenty years DOC, there's guys did twenty, twenty-five years as an officer. That's your choice, you know, if you're happy with the cap you're at, great, you know, but we all live within those means.
Mm-hmm. But this is for the future, not just for us, so we need to think about that.
I think sometimes when we talk about, okay, somebody who's maxed out, who's capped out, we can't, we're trying to cater to something. Trying to, as it to be, it's almost like that participation award, everybody's gonna get an award just because you played, even though.
Right.
And there comes that point where we, you know, we have to put our foot down as well too, we can not, and we talked about that last one. Not, and we can't have, make everybody happy.
No, and we're not for it.
We're not, and.
You know, we should be grateful.
Once we hit that cap.
Well, as many years as I've been promised something like this, I'm just grateful for this.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's great. I just try, I'm not trying to be the negative Nancy.
No, and I get what you're saying, and, and, and I do that, and I do know, but I do want Raul Kevin to know that I wasn't making light of it. I'm just saying that we all chose to be a government employee, and we all chose to do whatever job we did, so I don't, I don't want you to think that.
No, no, you're good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Um, after the point of two percent for the first five, and then every two years after that, the three percent.
Mm-hmm.
To address your concern in regards to not reaching the max, that you'll never reach that max. Perhaps, we need more than ten, and so I was gonna say, I will look at that when I'm doing numbers. And seeing if perhaps going out to twelve or fifteen years might reach that. And again though, the first five steps are completed in five years, and then the next one, so I mean, it, I will look at that again. But, um, I just wanna say, I think that might be a way to address that, that there's just no possibility to ever reach that cap, salary cap.
The main thing is, when we take a look at a, when we take a look at a position, it's, we say, okay, you're getting three sixty to fifty-two. But if there's nothing ever replaced to hit that fifty-two, within twenty-five year span, cause I know I'm stuck here twenty-five, well, I'm not, but. Most new guys, most brand new guys who are twenty-something years old coming into this line of work, even in their line of work, they already know. I gotta do twenty-five years to hit that number, but if I can't get to that number based on.
Yeah.
The longevity plan that we have in place now, there's, we're false advertising and it's an issue. Now, and you get one of these legal bigos out here, these young stallions that, uh, wanna challenge that, then where would we find ourselves?
Yeah.
Okay, well then it's gonna be forced, now we're forced to deal with that issue versus what we're trying to do here is. Fix it and get to, have an answer for that, cause that was the answer, that's what I asked, uh, Daniel, when he was here. Prior to, prior to you coming on and taking that, that position is, how do I get to fifty-two thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, so I'll look at that, I think that might be a way to address that.
I like that, thank you, and I didn't even think about that, I mean, I thought about it, but I didn't think about it, like, as to make it where you could actually get to where you have now.
One led to the other, so that was.
Yeah, that's a great point.
That's perfect.
Okay.
In those job descriptions.
And I think H, we kind of, um, already addressed is current employees inter steps at current rate, or move up to the closest step. So I think, I think we kind of addressed that, and you're gonna, um, talk with Carrie and see how that's gonna play out. Does anybody have any, um, comments, questions for Joel, or concerns about what we already said, or having Carrie look at it? To see how that would work?
Uh, for the first five steps, please?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it kinda shows it on the sheet, actually, if you really look at it, um, on the sheet, if you go to, um, if you do every three. Granted, this is every, the other fellow is every two, if you don't get, um. Um, if they're gonna do two percent for the first five years, that's one, two, one, two, three, four, five. It'll be at thirteen twenty-five, and so if we're doing it every three years, you look at the other person at, at nine years. They're thirteen eleven, so right there, they're already exceeded them. So that's why I was saying, I don't think that first five years, the, the percent.
For if we, so that's why I was saying, I don't think that first five years, the, the percentages, cause the more you make, cause of your percentage bump, the more the percentage goes up, so it's just gonna, yeah, um.
Well, that's what we're saying, if the bottom is starting right here, we have to make sure we spread it out. So how does, something like being here, do we implement the first five years of our tenure and then the step program, and then that's what we're at?
Yeah, that's something that, it would have to be down across the board, that way everybody got.
Yeah, and that's what she's gonna check with Carrie to see if, what, what that would take and what that would mean financially for us to do that.
Yeah, cause if.
What's more feasible for us to do.
So if it's just like way up there, then obviously we'll have to re- staff, reevaluate, but, um, without taking care of the people that are already here, it's hard to take care of the people that are here.
Right. Alright, so I, anybody have any comments, um, anything they wanna, thank you, you, Joel, regarding this?
Excellent work.
Yes.
Thank you. And now we're gonna go over to item number two, discussion and review of the personnel rules and regulations, um, equipment and hiring process, section six, probationary enforcement. And it should have been one of the three pieces of paper that you had.
Something like that.
And I actually like this policy. And I liked to see that was put in, I thought it, it addressed it very well. Joel, what do you?
I move that we accept it as, as proposed.
Well, we'll hold that motion, wait just a minute, we're gonna still discuss, um, go ahead, Allison.
Um, so, uh, I do, uh, think this is excellent, but of course I defer to police and fire. And because this does say recommended by the police chief and the fire chief, I am assuming that this is what your departments would like. I am curious, I mean, the two-year, uh, it's not a probationary time, but the two-year of any training or uniforms. Um, if that language, um, I, I believe that was passed as an ordinance?
Yes.
And so I don't know if, uh, within this section C, it should say as well per ordinance, such and such dash such and such. In, in other words, does that ordinance need to be reflected so that one doesn't, um, because it says exclusive of any required training, certification, or education programs? But isn't that also exclusive of that ordinance? I mean, or at least does it have to refer to it? So that's one question, and then the other question is on H, um, is our current policy, is, uh, do we have a current policy and is it?
We don't.
We don't.
No.
And does this, um, our current policy was on, like, this is separate from interim positions. Because in the, our, our current policy is six months for interim, but in the new recommended language, that had changed.
Yeah, but that has never gone forward past, and, um, Joel and I talked about that. And we need to start bringing back all of the stuff that we had already discussed and get Joel on board so she can see all the changes that we wanted, because it just went stalemate.
Yeah.
And it's been that way for one half a year.
Yeah.
So, um.
That, I believe there were eight or nine policies that the employee council had worked on and made adjustments, suggestions. And it, yes, it stopped.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at this time, I have had both fire chief and police chief address me, really wanting to make sure that we got this added for their department. They felt it was, you know.
Important.
And very important, and so that is why I just grabbed this one and I'm wanting to run with it. The other ones, because of this great pay, pay equity that we've been working on, um, again, once, you know, I think probably the next meeting, I can bring them back. If, if that's what you'd like to do, see what we were doing before and where we wanna roll with those. But right now, yes, this one was identified as having a high, high need to move forward.
I think that they were already completely done, like, I mean, we just, we didn't have them go forward because they'd already come to this and civil service.
I don't think they went to civil service.
Yeah, cause they went to them first before they ever came to us.
Oh, okay, I'll check.
Okay.
Uh, in the previous reading, you had said that you would like to review them again and look at them in entirety, and I would like to, there are some that I would like, like to look at as well. For instance, that six-month, uh, cap versus open-ended interim, I don't know why that was suggested. Um, so I think we do need to revisit that, but so for this case, for this, um, H.
Equipment and hiring, this, this is what you all have worked on, and I think it is, is good for this, because this just deals with the new hire, not the.
Uh, not any of the others.
No, it's just a new hire.
Okay, so I would just say that perhaps I would recommend an amendment to see referencing that ordinance.
I don't think that it has to, but do check with Jim, but we, um, we can ask her to check and she can, if he says yes, it needs to be, she can bring it back and we can, um, review it again, but I don't think that it needs to be on there.
That's completely separate.
Right, I, I think it's two different things, yeah.
Okay, then I.
This, this right here reflects what we do and how, what training we provide and try to teach them throughout the whole year and their, and their task book that we have implemented now. So this kinda backs us up on what we're trying to do on our end.
But when it is implemented, it's across the board for every employee, so.
For every new employee coming in.
Right, well, those were my only questions, that Joel deferred you.
No, we don't need a motion, so, um, I think the next step for this is the civil service.
Oh, I see.
And then, once it goes to civil service, it'll go to the mayor and council, but I think the way it's written, I'm good with Joel. So I think when she moves it to civil service, just let them know that we were all in agreement with it and thought that. Um, anybody have agenda items for the next meeting? Um, about bringing those back, Joel, the last time we brought those back, we brought them, he, we did them all together, so it was kinda hard to like jump from one to the next, if you remember, it was really hard to, it was very rushed.
It was a lot of information.
Right, so I would like if maybe, and if everybody is okay with it, cause I wanna say there was like, you said nine or ten.
I thought there were about.
Maybe we tackle two at a time.
I'm good with that. Is there any thing prioritized, I don't remember of this.
I think the only thing that I would prioritize is the net, the, what was it, the definitions of what interim, internal, not internal, but interim and some other, I think that we need to like get those done and, and approved. And then, um, about the internal promotions, because that's not in our, our rules right now.
Internal promotions.
And so for what we have to do right now is you cannot promote internally, we have to open it up to everybody.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So everybody gets to apply and you get to apply.
Right.
So, um, if we tackle two at a time, that would be five meetings, do we wanna do, um.
We can have specials, when it's.
Do some work sessions?
Yeah, we can do that, it just.
Some specials?
Yeah.
And then, or say what we can cover in an hour?
Or we could. Yeah.
And move slowly?
Yeah. I'm oka- I'm okay with moving slowly, I mean, there wasn't anything in there that I thought needed to be rushed.
Right, what if we bring them all to the table and then our next agenda, our next meeting can just establish what we wanna.
So focus on?
Okay, let's do that, Joel, then, then bring them all to the table and then we'll focus on what we wanna.
Probably have some agenda.
Yeah. Is anybody else got anything else they wanna bring to the council for next time? Um, do you think we might have a draft by next time for us to look at it?
Our next meeting is February, yes, I'll, I'll have a draft.
Okay, can you put that back on there, and it's still, we're not gonna be voting on it yet, it's still a draft and, and she, and Carrie may not have time to look at all the financials yet. So let's just, with what you can bring back to us, Joel, let's just look at that.
And I, and I might bring back multiple drafts.
And, right.
You know, so yeah, I'm, I don't have any problem bringing that back by February, and I will do my best to get Carrie's input.
Well, I like, but she is also preparing for the budget, she's doing other things, so if we don't get that in time, don't, don't fret. If there are other things that we can look at and say, yes, we like it, let's run with that, that would be easier for you in the long run when you have the full proposal. Yes.
Um, just on behalf of the cover from the migrate, I just wanna thank the fire department for the amazing job they did on the food baskets and toys for Christmas. And the library wrapped around twenty books, um, with the Mississippi High School Honor Society, they did a book drive as well, and they came and wrapped, and we delivered to the fire department. Um, but really and truly, the work this extra giving, uh, for the community is just wonderful, thank you so much.
Anybody have anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Uh, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You're adjourned.